Appreciate it by being here this morning. Start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chris, would you care to lead some prayer, please?
Sir, if you're here with the Father, Lord, we're here today to, to conduct business for the county, Lord. We, we thank you for allowing this country to be a country that, that allows us to govern ourselves, Lord. Dear God, we pray that the decisions here today will be what will be best for the entire county. We pray that all the information that was provided here today will be clear to all and understand and that we will all be pleasing in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. Good morning, everyone. Let's start with the approval of minutes. Minutes for July the 3rd, 2024. I hear, excuse me, a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Let's go with it. In the matter of claims and payroll, we've got total claims, payroll claims at $641,228.97, payroll three, 16, 973, regular claims two, 51, 087, and 31 cents. Now, the cycle seventy-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Again, a total of six, forty-one, two, twenty-eight, ninety-seven. All of payroll pending on State Board of Accounts. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second? Second by Bob. All in favor? Aye. And gentlemen, I got this sheet from last meeting that we didn't sign. It'll be here with it. I know we approved it. We just need to sign it. Sheila, we've got a financial report for us with some general information.
I've got a copy of the monthly financial.
I'm going.
Copy of the monthly financial. And again, going into budget hearings, that's kind of the next four or six weeks. And the numbers on the June 30th cash balances again are what we will be using and the state will use to determine what amounts that we'll receive, whether it's the highway or EMS and all of those. We'll just keep you updated on numbers.
And speaking of that, and I'll just mention it now, when I spoke to commissioners earlier, I should have the commissioner's budget finished up by the end of this week and get it submitted to you. I've got some final numbers from insurance yesterday, kind of what I've been waiting on, so I think I'm ready to put those together. So, thank you for that. Allow timekeeping system. We've got a two o'clock meeting today here in the commissioner's room for all the department heads. Please, everyone be here. Matty, have you got anything you want to add to that?
Yeah. So, I need a commissioner who basically will be designated to log in and sign off of their appointed departments every two weeks. State Board of Accounts requires that a commissioner signs off on payroll, and because everything's electronic now, it has to be done through the system. For the appointed departments, that, okay, let's just do the building, for example. I can give Suzanne access to correct the inspector's timesheet and things like that. There's a miss punch or anything, like approval leave request or something like that, since she oversees it. But for her, there would have to be a commissioner to do that. So, unless you want her to have access to her own.
We always sign off on the payroll now, so we'll need to continue to do that.
Right. So, do you want me to give her, like, those departments, you want me to give them access to their own timesheets to fix them if there's an issue, and then you would sign off on them at the end?
I would recommend that we let the departments fix their timesheet because they are the ones in charge of their timesheets.
That's great.
Okay. So, I can set them up as payroll secretaries in there, and they would be able to fix their issues, and then you would have to go in and sign off on the timesheets for those departments. Okay, so, who, do you all want logins? Does, do we want us designate one person to log in and sign off on those?
Whatever you, gentlemen, decide here. I mean, I don't have a problem doing it every two weeks. Joe, I know you have problems sometimes getting where you're at.
Yeah, it's not a good option, really, for me. I, they got a pipe and internet where I'm at.
Right.
So, it'd be hard for me to...
Bob, do you have any input?
If it's trouble for Joe, rather than three of us, or rather than two of us, Bob will just make it present to the board.
If you guys are fine with that, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with that.
Is that all right, Dana?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will get you set up, and I will send out the supervisor.
Yeah, we should just, uh, moralize it.
We'll make that a motion here, so it's official. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to allow President of Commissioners Gary Burton to sign off biweekly on the payroll.
Second.
Got a motion by Joel, second by Bob. All in favor? Aye.
Okay. I'll set up a login for you, and I can send you the training booklet, and then also, if you can attend the two o'clock meeting today, that will go over everything you need to know.
I wish I could, but I probably can't.
Okay. I can send you the video copy of it.
I'll sit down with you and do whatever I need to do to get trained on it.
Yeah. Everybody is currently using the system except for the large outside departments, like highway EMS dispatch, I'm waiting on the time clocks for them, just because there's so many employees out there that it'd be very challenging to try to do it before we get the time clocks, which will probably be here, I'm hoping, in two weeks or less. Tentatively, I asked them for an update, so they should be giving me one later this afternoon at my meeting.
Yeah, I hope. We'd order those sometime back, so...
It was about two and a half weeks ago, I think.
I think it was their June meeting.
Like the 16th or 17th, I think, of June, maybe. I can't remember off the top of my head, but they should be here soon. The, I had a request from the 911 director for the mobile app, since she has meetings and things that she's not always at the building. I was just coming for a quick, like, permission to give her access for that.
So, you have employees that would need that?
No, 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 just the director.
You're on salary anyway, so it wouldn't matter.
Well, you've had your appointed people doing timesheets, like, the highway superintendent and 911.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Do you want them to continue doing those?
No. No, I think we want to get rid of those paper sheets completely.
No, 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 I mean, they would be clocking in and out of the system.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, gotcha.
So, she was asking for the mobile app.
Sure.
Okay.
That makes sense. Gentlemen, any questions or concerns on that?
I do not.
Um, I am working with IU Health right now. This is not related to this, but I'm working with IU Health to get up, get the healthy results scheduled, and then the open enrollment, so that we can do those on the same day again, hopefully this year. So, I hopefully will have dates for that next meeting. And then, also, we have Easy Hire, which is one of the systems that we signed up for with the new timekeeping system. It is where we can put all the new hires through one system, and it can filter out to the department heads, and it goes to, indeed, and all the other free websites where it advertises those. So, if anybody wants to try that, let me know. The Treasurer's Office tried it for the first time. It worked really well, and all the applications would go through one spot, and they would come directly to your emails. So, if anybody wants to try it, let me know. I'm happy to help.
911's back there waving X's.
Yeah. Okay, we can do that later, then. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matty.
Jail project updates. Had a good meeting last Thursday with redevelopment commission moving forward. There were some concerns by Mr. Hobbs about commissioners not knowing about the process. I'd like for these gentlemen to clear that up here this morning, if they would, please.
Uh, we, as I've, and I have spoken, it's no secret to Sam Hobbs, on several occasions, he's brought forth concerns, as any, as any citizen of Owen County can. I was somewhat, I was aware that was going to be a process that we were looking at. However, the main concern is that it was not voted in open forum or discussed in, in a meeting. That I have to agree on, it was not. So, that point was well made, and that's basically the line of discussion that me and Mr. Hobbs had, that proceeding forward with the redevelopment group was a discussion we had. I did share that with him. However, his concerns, it wasn't brought forth in open forum and discussed openly. That's, that's true statement. He, he did say that, and, and that's about the discussion. So, he didn't throw me under the bus, but he brought up a point, and that's all there is to it, really, his concerns. That's my, that's my take on the discussion we had. I don't feel a throw gun to the bus or anything.
I just want to make sure it's clear you got it all.
And did I not share with you, Sam, that we had talked about redevelopment, but, but in fact, you questioned me as to why it was not brought in front of the commissioners? Is that fair?
That is correct. You did say you talked to him about it on the phone.
Yes.
No question is...
No, we talked about it here, just right here.
Yeah, it's, it's the comment that Joel said, that we talked to him about it on the phone, and stuff like that. We never brought it before all three commissioners to vet it. That was my concern.
I'm gonna let Dana touch, based on that. Bob, you want to...
Yeah, well, it was brought up in the meeting, and I was not here, because the reason I wasn't here at the council meeting is, I'm president of the Special Constellation Club, and they meet at the same night, so that's why I don't come to the council meetings and stuff. And thanks, and you never called me on the phone, Sam.
I didn't say I called you on the phone. That's not the question that's in question.
Wait a minute. Don't be raising your voice to me. I'm the commissioner yet. You're not. So, please respect this position.
Good, I do.
Okay, thank you, Sam. I've never said anything negative about you, and I don't like things saying negative about me. And I'm just leaving it at that.
I didn't say that, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll wait till then.
Thank you.
But I think the question in hand here is that, out of fairness, the question Sam asked, and I can't answer it definitively, is he asked, was it vetted? It was discussed. Was brought here in open forum, voted on to relinquish this to redevelopment? It was not.
It wasn't voted on, but it was discussed.
Exactly. Did I share that with you? So, just, it, his questions are fair and honest, and I responded the best I knew how, and really, that's...
I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it.
Absolutely. It was talked about.
That's all that matters.
And I think, I think Sam's concerns are how it was vetted, and in the process, it was gone ahead and proceeded forth with. That's where I'm at with this.
So, it was discussed in the public meeting of the commissioners, that that was a process that could be used to, to do a land swap without having to put forth dollars. And so, that was discussed here, but there was no action taken, because there was no action needed at that point in time. Because you can always stop the process any time there's a resolution that comes up, like today. If the commissioners don't want to do it, they don't vote for it, and so, there was no, there was no necessity of voting when it was discussed. So, it was discussed in open forum, it was discussed here, and again, it was just discussed as a viable option for obtaining the land that the county wanted. But again, there was no need to have a vote at that point in time. So, that brings us to the resolution that we have, if you so choose, to move forward.
Before you read that, going back to the redevelopment, it was favored by 90% of the people in the room to move forward. The redevelopment agreed and signed two resolutions to move forward with this.
And it's gonna, and Gary, it's gonna come up sooner or later, for sure, but I've got both of these resolutions being proposed today, and folks will hear them after a bit. There's four individuals on this committee, and all of them have signed off on it. They find it favorable. We're a democracy. They want to go on with this and proceed forth with it, there's a signatures. Redevelopment Committee agrees, likes it, and want to pursue it. So, there you have it. These resolutions will be read off today and decided upon, I'm sure. So, that's important for the people to know. Redevelopment Committee heard this, heard this idea, and they're going to run with it. That's what they're for. That committee's for just that purpose, so...
And they had two resolutions because of the two different properties. For the commissioners, at this point in time, it's simply the county property, so there's one resolution today that Mr. Sochoo's approving. So, this would be Resolution Number 2024-009, and it's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of interest in real estate to the Owen County, Indiana Redevelopment Commission. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen, Indiana, the county, now owns an interest in the property described in Exhibit A attached here, too, which describes the property that, part of that property will be used for the land transfer. Whereas, Indiana Code 36-1-11-8 authorizes the transfer of real property from one governmental entity to another pursuant to adoption of substantially identical resolutions by each identity, and the redevelopment commission has passed theirs. Whereas, the Owen County, Indiana Redevelopment Commission, the commission desires to obtain all legal rights, title, and interest in the real estate, and whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen, Indiana desires to transfer all of the county's legal rights, title, and interest in the real estate to the commission. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen as follows. Section 1, pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-11-8, the county hereby transfers all the county's interest in real estate to the commission for no consideration. Section 2, the Board of Commissioners and auditor of the county and other appropriate officers of the county are hereby authorized to take all such actions and execute a deed and all such additional instruments as are necessary or desirable to effectuate the transfer of the real estate to the commission. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption. And this is adopted this 17th day of July, 2024.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions, gentlemen? 009. With no questions being asked, ask for a motion for the approval of Resolution Number 2024-009, a resolution of the Board of Commissioner of the County of Owen, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of interest in real estate to Owen County, Indiana Redevelopment Commission. Do I hear a motion?
I make that motion for 2024-009.
Have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
I'll make a second. Again, I want to tell everybody that this was chosen by the Redevelopment Commission. These people believe in it. We're going to go with it, regardless of my thoughts and feelings. Get a second.
Have a motion by Bob, second by Joel. All in favor? Aye. Anything else on that, Dana?
Nope. Okay, there will be a, an executive, like, there will be an executive session by the RDC pursuant to Indiana Code, the appraisals were to be confidential, and so we're keeping them such, and so the Indiana Code also allows the Redevelopment Commission to meet, to go through these confidential documents at some point in the future, after negotiations and, and a contract or sort or agreement has been made for a transfer. Those appraisals can be made public with the Redevelopment Commission, some chooses, and my understanding from the meeting is that they would do that when it's appropriate, but it's, could have a negative impact on negotiation for a transfer if that information got out before, before...
Thank you. Code enforcement officer Susan has got a couple of applications in. She's still working on that, so that process is still moving forward. Special event application, Hilli 100. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good.
My name is Jerry Halpern.
How are you, Jerry?
Guess the only question I have on this, and we do this every year, appreciate you, including Owen County and part of your bike ride.
We appreciate your cooperation and help.
The, the biggest concern that we always have is have you worked with the local sheriff's department to work on road crossings and safety issues, those type of things?
We are in process of doing that.
Okay. Guys, gentlemen, have any questions, concerns?
I have been good every year.
I'm gonna ask for...
I was a sheriff, all right.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to allow the Hilli 100, their special event application, with stipulation that the sheriff's department has been notified and has taken care of necessary safety issues.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by myself. Second by Joel. All in favor? Aye. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great day. And Sheila, he has all his... And we are going to waive the fee, because it does not include county grounds. And there is insurance and everything, as you know, is in there. Do you have that? I give you the whole packet there. 911.
Good morning. So, I'm here today to give an update on the radio project. The radio committee has met, and we are moving forward with finding a subject matter expert to assist us with this process, because it's such an important process for the county. It's important to get it right, and so I have searched high and low, and I've found a consultant who is very qualified to assist us with this, this process going forward. And we met with him last week. There are several different options we can go with, with the consultant, but first, I think it's important that you, he's here with me today, that you hear from him, hear a little bit about his background and experience. This is Terry Burnsworth.
Nice to meet you, Jerry.
Nice to meet you. My background, well, I, I'm licensed architect, just so you know. I got into radio systems because I'm three generations state police, and back in the 70s, we were changing out crystals at the kitchen table for the district. So, the, when I started the, doing the radio consulting specifically, over 15 years ago, before that, I was doing it for free. Then it became a paying thing, and not just for Indiana or around the country. In fact, I'm the only one in Indiana that specializes in this, as far as radio, public safety, radio communication systems. It's not uncommon, I've, I've done work in, oh, by the way, after Ball State, I went to Penn State, taught there for a while, and then I taught out of Kansas State for a while, too. I was a professor for a while. I've done this for counties like Putnam County, the Koskiasko County, Grant County, Randolph County, I mean, you can list them all the way down through, over half the counties in the state. They run into a similar situation, because what happens is that when you're, when you're dealing with an analog system...
So, let me ask you something. With all those counties that you just mentioned...
Yeah.
How many have built off of your recommendation out of those counties?
100%, all of them. One thing, I lecture around the country, I should clarify, I lecture around the country, I'm asked to lecture, they always pay my way and pay my stay, on procurement models. What's happened in the past is that when you, when you go and you buy a radio system or buy components of a radio system, usually you just choose a radio shop and you go with it. That's the way it's always worked in the past. That's the way I grew up. I mean, Raycom out of Lafayette is who we used, okay? Things are different now, because there are usually salespeople that are involved, okay? They're not, you can't just give them a radio and say what I used to do, and just, hey, correct that for me. That, they gotta get their technician involved, okay? Well, what has happened is, and the best example I can give, when I did the Madison County project, they, they wanted to utilize one of the premier radio systems, and it was going to be a $12 million project. Well, they came to me, and they said, okay, the, actually, the Jim Wilson, he was the attorney then, he's a great guy, and he, he said, Terry, I think we need to publicly procure this, okay? And I said, okay. And I said, I've done RFP process, because radio systems are apples and oranges, by the way, okay? It's not like your cell phone that you can communicate across vendors, you can't do that with radio systems. And so, we went through an RFP process, which is under Indiana Code 522-9, and you set up committees, and we do this. I mean, I've done over 100 of these, okay, RFP processes, and by the time we got done and signed the contract, it was 6.5 million dollars. And it's like, where did that 5.5 million go? It was the same vendor, by the way, that wanted. And, well, that's, that's called rent seeking, and that's one of my lectures that I give around the country. It's, you know, I could sell you a hammer for 10 bucks, I could sell him a hammer for $5,000. He gets the same thing. I just get the pocket. Okay? So, so that's what I do. I break through that process, and I, and I question things. Sometimes I'm hired by counties to be the heavy, to go through and question what a radio shop is doing. Why are you doing it that way? How is that going to solve the problem? What are you dealing with as far as your mill amps going into the radio system? How's that signal going to work? What kind of antenna system are you using? It's that kind of thing, okay? I'm suggesting to you a couple of options. One is you can use the cheaper option, you can use a preferred vendor and look at doing a simulcast system, and I don't do any what's called an RSSI review or propagation analysis. I don't do any of that stuff. It's, I, I can't take responsibility for it then. I'm, all I'm doing is making sure you're getting your best value, okay? But what I would suggest is that you go through, and I do a complete evaluation of your system, okay? And then you also do an RFP to be able to actually solve it. I'm not suggesting by any means that you go to the level here, okay? But you can't be down here. Public safety, the first of the first responders is sharing. You'd all know that. That's the way it works, okay? If you don't have emergency logistics in place, it fails, okay? And that recently just happened, a few days ago. If they could have communicated on the same radio systems in Pennsylvania, they would have had not as many issues possibly, okay? That's extremely important. I'm suggesting in the middle ground somewhere, okay? You know, you, you can choose whatever you want, but when you do the RFP process, then all of a sudden, you get not just one preferred vendor, which has the benefit of knowing what they're going to be able to tell you, like, well, I'm going to give you a 25% discount. Well, yeah, but I also know that you're making, you know, 50% on the project, okay? So, so, but the RFP makes it competitive, and then it gives the other options, alternates, basically, okay? So, I'm suggesting you do it through that process, but I also gave the one, if you just want me to negotiate with a preferred vendor and put it in a system, like I said, without doing the evaluation.
I think it should be done properly. This is a very, very serious piece of business here. The question I have for you, Terry, maybe you can or cannot answer that. We are looking budget-wise, five, 500,000, a little over that. budget-wise, five, five hundred thousand, a little over that, what's feasible? I mean, can we build a, a radio tower system for that kind of money?
The, not the system up here.
And I'm-
What you would have to do, I wish, I don't know your name.
Gary.
Gary, Gary, what you would have to do, Gary, you would do a phasing process. You can't afford it all at once, so let's do this, knowing that the equipment we're putting in, because what's happening in public safety and emergency communications is the land mobile radio, you know, what the sheriff carries on his belt, the brick, okay? Those will always be here, but everything's shifting toward broadband, everybody's heard of FirstNet, okay? Well, there's public safety broadband systems outside of FirstNet even. Well, by the time you phase it in and the equipment that you're putting in, and you need to put another layer of equipment on that, let's say, three years from now, well, you've budgeted for that and, and the equipment that you put in this year actually can, you can overlay that other equipment onto it. Because what's going to happen is, the broadband system's gonna become extremely important in the future. It's gonna be expected, why can't I see the video? Why can't I see any of that on scene, okay? Why is it that I only have voice? Why can't I have data now? So, that's what I would suggest doing. So, part of what the review would do is, you know, I work with Sherry and she has a stakeholder, a radio committee, I guess you would call it, and I meet with them and I explain the process of what they need to do and then I, I put the estimates together, of course. And then after that, we send it out for the RFP, okay? And so that way, it's competitive across the board, there's not a preferred vendor that would be used, okay? But it would have to be phased in. I, I don't see any way around it, okay?
Well, and, and I appreciate that and I'm asking questions just to give the public general information. This is something that's pretty complex. I guarantee you, there's probably not three people in this room that'll understand much of any of this. They, they can tell us that, but I don't believe that.
Yeah.
Sherry had mentioned to me, and I'm gonna, I don't know if she's mentioned it to the fellow commissioners, the highway department's on a different frequency and she'd like to bring those all in together. I, I think that that's important, put them on digital, get them off the five hundred and get them with everybody else, if that's possible in this process.
Yeah, and, and, and I didn't mean to interrupt, but an example of that, I have that happen a lot. In fact, I have it where there's a, you know, the radio system that everybody's been under since the nineties is what's called a P twenty-five, Project Twenty-five system, okay? But there's also other radios out there called DMR radios, digital mobile radios. Well, why aren't those the same? Because they don't understand the same software system, okay? But what's happened is I've done it where schools have bought DMR systems, but the county needs to talk to them, well, we put in a bridging system. That's part of that. So, like in, let's take the highway. You don't necessarily have the money to go out and replace all their radios, but you wanna be able to communicate between a seven, eight hundred megahertz, a VHF signal to their, whatever they use, I don't know, they may use a UHF. Well, you can bridge that, okay? And that's the way the phasing would work, in my opinion, okay?
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're looking for, somebody that can tell us those things and do those things. In my communications with some of the folks out there in public safety, nobody can say, yeah, we built a radio system. They haven't.
Yeah. And the first thing you do in any evaluation is, you do a propagation analysis of received signal strength to see, where do we have all of our holes? That's the first thing you have to solve.
Guys, I'm doing, I'm the only one doing some talking here.
Well, you're, we're, we're being asked to consider something that I don't know anything about.
Right.
What you bring me is what I-
Wanna look at.
Wanna look at or, or see before anything's done because there's key players in this county. Unfortunately, sheriff isn't here. EMS is represented here today. There's people that need to know this, they need to be involved in this process as well as highway superintendent.
Yep.
And I believe that, you know, I think it's important that they, that they're involved in this building process beyond, because your recommendation may be what you believe to be the best recommendation, but yet it may not just work for Owen County.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
We've got highway department on a separate band right now. Why do we need them on a common band? Why do we need them involved with the same band as Sherry or Chris? I, I don't know, this is, this is all Greek to me.
Right. What you do when you set this up, and I always do have a recommendation, like when I do an RFP, the RFP is developed with all the stakeholders, because you set up who is every department that needs to be involved in this, that would have some ancillary talking to emergency communications. Highway would obviously during a blizzard situation or something like that, or during tree falling, okay? So, they have to have a stake into this, okay? So, you always bring all those in and then when you put the RFP together on how you wanna, what you would normally call bidding, but it's not, this apples and oranges, then you put down, what is the important components we want to be evaluating? Because when you do an RFP, most of my RFPs are between seventy and eighty percent is performance-based, only twenty to thirty percent is cost-based, okay? Because you're more interested in the performance of, of what's going on based on what those stakeholders told you they needed, okay? But you, you are one hundred percent right, that's, that's the first thing that happens on a committee. And then the other thing is, I explain things where this is how radio systems have always evolved, okay? Because I think it's important that everybody sees that and saying, well, we, we need to be doing that later on, because I don't wanna impose what I believe I should be doing, okay? I mean, there's, I've done that before, but it's not the appropriate thing to do, okay? I think each county should have its own control of its system.
I think it's important that we bring a professional such as this individual in to work with Sherry and the radio committee. I think there's five individuals that-
There's six.
Six, okay? So, that decision will go through them. Obviously, we have money available for this, we took the money from the previous contract, pulled it back, it could be used in this very same situation. I'm gonna defer to the attorney and see if we need to look at a contract beforehand to see what kind of arrangement or agreement is involved. I want some legal advice here.
It is a standard, they got a contract.
Yeah.
So, it's been vetted many times, but I definitely wanna review and work with something, but you could approve it pending my review, except for you.
I would feel more comfortable doing that.
So, so we could make a motion today depending, pending the attorney's-
Attorney's review.
Advice, it, review, is that favorable?
That's what I should be.
Would you like to make that motion, Joel?
I'll make that. We'll, we'll, we'll go forward with the consultation pending the attorney's review.
Got a motion by Joel, second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is for the-
Full review.
The full review.
Yes.
So, one last thing real quick, can you speak to timeline? I just want everybody, I just want it on the record, what his recommended timeline looks like, so it sets expectations.
Yeah. Well, I'll do the attorney, what, what's his name?
Dana.
Dana. What, I'll, I'll send what I've done in other counties because attorneys have always dug changes and I'll send that through Sherry. And then, but in the meantime, I will also, she'll be setting up the meeting, so she'll meet by spot, seeing what a contact will be heard. The, she'll set up those committee meetings, get started, and we're looking at about twenty days for the evaluation. And then after the twenty days, then it's usually anywhere from about seventy to eighty days for the RFP process, okay? You know, it takes me about twenty days to finish the RFP, but you gotta give the vendors a couple of months. It's not like hard bidding. They're putting together, they're putting a lot of time and effort in to solutions they believe meet the requirements we put together, okay?
Part of this is going to be made with ARPA funds and those funds have to be obligated by December first.
Yes.
So, there'll have to be some contract in place-
Exactly right.
-by the end of the year.
Aye. Newton County, I'm doing theirs and they, they allocated two million out of their ARPA for their system.
Yeah, and I-
Same situation.
Yeah, we've already taken care of the ARPA situation, there's, there's no issues with that, that's done and over with. The only thing that we'll have to be concerned about, and Polly's sitting back there, is any additional appropriation for the balance. We'll have to see how that plays out, there'll have to be some kind of commitment before the end of the year. I believe Sheila was, we had a discussion on this, so, but ARPA is fine, we're good to go. I had another, oh, if you could provide her with a list of counties that you worked with, forward that to me, I'm gonna make some contacts, not that I don't believe a thing that you're saying, because I do, but I've gotta follow up on making some calls.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And gentlemen, if you need that list or want that list to do the same, I suggest that you have Sherry send it to you. Highway. Morning, Greg.
Good morning. Little missus.
Morning, Greg. Um, commissioners, I'm gonna start out with a report in regard to employees and compensation during the last storm, I know you're all aware, but we had two employees injured. One has been in the hospital since his crushing injury with a log. He is due to get out tomorrow. Tonight, he went from the hospital to rehabilitation, so he is going home in a wheelchair and a walker tomorrow, but he is improving greatly.
Good.
He's classified as an operator, but he is one of my truck drivers, the second person classified as an operator, but also a truck driver is having surgery on his leg as we speak. Worked with John Parmley and Sheila's office in regard to these situations and I think everything right now is where we need to be. I'm down two part-time laborers. I interviewed one and he is going to take a sure analysis today, so maybe we can get somebody back in place. So, right now, we're, we're short folks. A little bit about motor trims, commissioners, here where I asked you for a boat in the last meeting to buy a ten thousand dollar part for a motor trim and we were promised that part in five days and we still don't have it, so.
Is there any update? No.
Not as of this morning.
That was through Boyd's, correct?
That's correct.
Long term.
Yeah, our roadsides are in bad shape.
Spoke with Shannon Brock, our milestone representative in regard to CCMG roadways. We are scheduled for them to start work in Owen County on the twenty-sixth. I think with the rain dates, the twenty-ninth is probably more likely, but they are actually scheduled to be here on the twenty-sixth. All community crossing roads have to be done by the last day of August.
With your debris, tree issues that you continue to have, how are we doing on road prep? You gotta be behind, I'm sure.
At this point in time, we could hand them, right now, today, we can hand them Pottersville Road, we can hand them Jones Road, Streets of Freedom. I think, I have to take one more look at Splinter Ridge and I think it's ready to turn over. Pleasant View, or, excuse me, too many pleasantries, Pleasant Hill. It's gonna take a little bit of work, but it'll be ready, even if it has to be the last route that we do.
How's Treesdale looking? That last section, we got it on there as well?
Yeah, it is on there too and it needs some ditch work.
Okay. Just be nice if we could get them both up there in that same spot at the same time.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I got what I would call bad news from Asphalt Solutions in regard to the distributor truck we were supposed to get. It's not gonna happen from Asphalt Solutions. I've spoke with Evergreen Roads, Evergreen Roads, it's part of the Heritage Group, which is one of our vendors. They are in Millian County and they could put us on the schedule for September eighth with an absolute promise that they'll be here. I pretended they had told them that we would take that. Since we got the news from Asphalt Solutions, I put Ed Burdine to work on our old distributor truck again and gentlemen, I've got it holding pressure, excuse me, I don't have it holding pressure, Ed Burdine has it holding pressure. We were told by Southeastern, don't send it back there, but right now, we have it where it will function and work. So, commissioners, I'm just telling you, I'm gonna start with our own and use it as long as it'll work. The new one, according to MAC, the cabin chassis came off the production line yesterday. The cabin chassis for the new distributor truck is supposed to be delivered to Terre Haute, myself, and one of you will have to go over and make inspection of the truck and then it'll go straight from there to Ettenire in Illinois.
Kinda ahead of schedule, isn't it?
It is ahead of schedule, but the way things go from MAC, you know, about our dump truck, we'll take that any day. It still will-
I'm not complaining.
It still, it still will not go into production any sooner than Ettenire.
Okay.
So, we will still have that delivered in twenty-five.
What day do you wanna go look at that truck?
It's, came off the production line, so-
You're just waiting on a phone call?
I expect-
We'll wait to hear from you.
He told me to hit that lot this week and as soon as we go over and go over the truck, it could hit Ettenire, so I would like, if it comes in this week, I'd like to get it done this week.
Calls and we'll see who's available.
Tomorrow, we were able to secure two tanker loads of dust control through Great Lakes Salt, our vendor, our yearly vendor, they first quoted this, the dust control at a dollar seventy-nine a gallon, we were able to secure two tanker loads at a dollar forty-five a gallon. So, it came in cheaper. It will arrive tomorrow, both tankers and it will all be applied tomorrow, so we'll be putting down dust control in three point three miles of road with that.
Sprayer's working good, on the last week we were out there, we were-
Yeah.
Getting the bugs worked out?
Everything is good. I will say for this dollar forty-five gallon, Great Lakes is going to apply this.
Oh, really?
So, they are actually bringing their truck, they will apply it.
Outstanding.
But the sprayer, that chemical sprayer that we diverted is fine and we are using, you know, flake product that we bought from Skid, but also the local tire shops have given us all kinds of calcium chloride to use for dust control. But tomorrow is probably the biggest project all in one head, three point three miles. And there, I just have to have a person with, and the roads are prepped, smoothed out, ready I wanna touch on budget, just a moment, commissioners. And it's probably just to preface the, the public and all involved. We have been blessed with ARPA monies over the last few years. You'll see my next budget, my next set of claims that come through will be over six hundred thousand dollars between my own budget and ARPA, not all out of ARPA. But what I wanna say is, all this extra work is coming to an end. We will be working strictly off the highway budget and anything we get CCMG from here on out. I just wanted to preface you all with that because next year's road plan will not be anything like we've been used to in the last several years with ARPA money and I will bring a list, I'm gonna have it for the council meetings, so I could let them know, but we could go, I believe, six bridges out of ARPA money, we flayed a lot, but a lot of asphalt we put in- But we've built, I believe, six bridges out of ARPA money. We flayed a lot, but a lot of asphalt we put in culverts. It's been, uh, a really huge leg up for us, but it's, uh...
Well, I don't have a guarantee. I, I hear we're possibly gonna get some more of that through our auditor. Uh, again, I don't have that in the guarantee. Uh, it, it doesn't matter if it's a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, we'll take whatever we can get. So there's, there's possibly a, a little bit, it'll be a trickle compared to what we've had. Also received last week, uh, we received fourteen thousand and some change. And I don't have a letter here in front of me, it was provided to the Commissioners. Sheila has it right here for me. From the United States Department of Interior, uh, fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars, and it states in here that it can be used for public schools, roads, emergency response. So there is other options. We, we can, small project, but, uh, if you wanna put some type of proposal together for those funds, uh, we can, we can discuss that. It's fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. But it states right on here, it can be used for roads, so...
That money is already here?
Yeah, we have it already.
It just would have to be an appropriation to go to the council?
So, actually, I've got it at home. And Greg, I don't mean to stop you from what we're talking about here, but we have also roughly thirty thousand dollars of community crossings money that we can reapply for and has to be done by the end of this month. Is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, we, we've got the actual numbers in now, and it's a little less than thirty thousand.
Yeah, twenty-nine and some change. So Greg, he talked to me, and he may have talked to you gentlemen as well, uh, about one more road in Freedom, uh, that he thought could be done for that. I also asked him to look into fog seal, some of our existing community crossings roads that were done in eighteen, nineteen. Go back and, and I personally, and, and I'm, I, I'm gonna ask you guys for a favor, because it affects us all, that we look at, a- and again, here may be a problem because of a distributor truck. Maybe this, in September, this could happen, I don't know. But I would like to see us use that money to fog seal some of these existing roads and get these cracks and things taken care of. Uh, we've got a lot of roads that were done back in nineteen that we could save by doing this. Uh, I don't know what you guys think about that. I know Beamer Station's over in your district.
Well, it's, uh, one section of Beach Church, Greg, where there's a lot of the older community crossings roads out by me that have been beaten to death by, by horsehoes. And I have to agree that sooner than later, I think dressing these up would be, uh, would be a decent option. What do you mean fog coat, Greg? Do you mean chip and seal? Are you just gonna paint them down and...?
It's basically like driveway seal.
There's many different kinds of fog sealing. I'll just take some of them off the top of my head. I wasn't quite prepared to talk about fog sealing today.
Yeah, I threw it out there.
So, um, and, and we hadn't spoken about it, but, um, there's, there's different forms of fog seal. There's some, uh, free rejuvenate products out here that you can take to an old brittle set of asphalt and put down. Uh, asphalt starts to break up because it gets brittle. Um, that will bring asphalt back to life. There is some, uh, other products. There's one called Liquid Asphalt. Basically looks like what you've done when, um, you seal your driveway. Uh, those are two big ones that, uh, you use, and we're capable of putting those down with the equipment, uh, we have. And then if you see what, um, what the state highway has done, NDOT has done with Chip Seal. That's another form of, uh, fog seal. What you have to decide, you have to decide the surface that you have that you wanna put the fog down on. And then, um, you match that to the product that you have. So I may be able to go out to Beach Church Road and, um, for example, and just use the same product that was used on State Highway. And I would say you probably could. I, I know that asphalt very well out there, but, um... You may have to go down to, um, thinking about an older, um... You know, CCMG Road, uh, you know, out here, you've got Farron, you have, um, Porter Ridge. Those may need rejuvenate, added to them to give the asphalt some, uh, pliability. I just have to go out and look at the roads, put a plan together and say, this is what it is. And, um, with our own distributor truck, gentlemen, it's all laid down by the square, square yard. I can, you can figure that out and tell you what it will cost, uh, depending on what product. And then, uh, I could recommend, but you may decide not, you know, well, just put all the same down.
Well, I, I think we should, uh, the roads, the counties, have worked hard to get to the state, they ought to be maintained sooner than later.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm an advocate of doing any, you spend, you spend all this money on the road, it's no different than buying a new truck. It has to have maintenance. I know that's hard to see when you go out and you've got a road that's just patch after patch after patch after patch.
I would, I would suggest it, if he could project that together, that's something.
Here's our, here's our situation. He's gotta have this put together by the end of this month.
Yes.
So, I, I guess-
I'd say if he, I mean, he just named off some roads, he's, he's well aware-
And gentlemen, part of this has changed. I mean, I talked to you, I, I, I have a project that I would like to see done, and you all know that. We've had it engineered, and that was the project, um, on Baseline Road at the intersection. Uh, but I have spoke, uh, with the individual that would make the call on whether that would work on both of- Federal Safety Grant and/or CCMG, and, uh, he told me no. I needed to look elsewhere for money for that specific project. It just didn't fit either one of them, so, uh... You, you told me to do that, uh, we put it together. Uh, I prefaced that with sending them a copy of the engineering report, and he got back with me and said, no need to apply, and it just doesn't quite fit. So then we had to come up and regroup. That's when I said the road in Freedom, but I mean this other stuff, I could, I could, we could put it all together.
We've been talking about that intersection, and it needs to be done.
Yeah, we can't do anything with it with these funds. Greg, check state and federal, and it's just not there.
Well, then we'll just have to, we'll just have to move on with where it is.
I mean, there's a way to fund it at some point in time, but it, it's not gonna be out of what I have right now.
Right. So with that being said, can we make a motion here so we've got, give Greg some direction? Unless he's got something better suited, uh, I, I'd like to hear a motion to fog seal or preserve previous community crossings roads. And, and I don't know exactly how to put this, but stretch those funds on every road that you can possibly stretch.
Can I ask a question for you?
Sure.
We bought the chip and seal machine. Did we use one? Is that the way you figured on doing this, or what?
No, no, there, there's a difference.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm wanting that. My clear.
I have chip and seal. We have, um, out of budget to go up to twelve miles chip and seal. Um, and what we'll do, we'll just have to start and go as far as we can, but you already have that on a road plan. This is a totally different, uh, process, um, so, um...
It's basically crack seal.
Yeah.
That it covers the whole road.
Now, that also being said, I mean, we're talking about some roads that we said we were going to chip seal that we could do-
Fog.
We could do fog, so it, it will, it can change, and it's, that's not a problem. We can keep moving, uh, either way.
Without putting added pressure on you, Greg, are you comfortable with us making this motion to try to use this community crossings money that you have left, we have, has to apply for it, of course. We haven't got it yet.
Oh, I have absolutely no problem. I asked to be able to get every dime of it that was, uh, possible, so I, I have no problem, uh, with it. Probably fog seal is the least amount of work that we have to do to prep any thing. I mean, we're still dealing with, uh, storm damage right now. Uh, I'm running one crew constantly cleaning storm damage, and the rest of the crews have had to go back to normal work.
Yeah, this is something that somebody else could do for us, and it would take you kind of out of the picture possibly, uh, seeing you continue to work on other projects. But, uh, if you're comfortable with that, I, I think that it's the best county-wide.
County-wide?
Yeah.
Thirty thousand, you need to know, thirty thousand dollars doesn't go a lot.
No, I, I realize that.
We'll figure out what it does.
If, if we got two or three roads, that's better than what we have right now to save.
If we can go to the oldest and come to the current.
I, I would say... Really, Commissioner told about, about thirty thousand dollars, about two point eight miles. And just so everybody knows what I'm dealing with, it's not a lot, but we'll put something together for that.
If we throw some other money with that, maybe we can stretch that a little bit.
And, and that's just rough F's in the calculator and square yardage off.
Right.
You know, a road that's eighteen feet wide.
Let's communicate with Greg before the end of the week and come up with a plan. How's that sound?
Um, need to discuss, um, the Tower Road, uh, bridge that was damaged. And actually, I wanna discuss both bridges on Tower Road, but we'll start with the Iron Bridge. Historic Iron Bridge was damaged. I met with, um, United Consulting, uh, on location this week, and I wanna be very clear in this meeting, Commissioners. I know they're our vendor, uh, and we've worked with them before, but I'm not real happy with United Consulting right now. Uh, this bridge has been damaged for, uh, now going on two months, and they finally showed up yesterday to do an inspection.
They were called day one?
Well, they have to be, they were called day one because it's required to keep our federal funds that that's reported to them, and they do the reporting, and they're reporting that the damage was there. Uh, they finally did yesterday, and damage assessment. Or this week, excuse me, it would've been Monday, not yesterday. There were a couple of options thrown to me in regard to this, uh, bridge. Uh, one of them, I think, is agreeable, the other one isn't. One is make the necessary repairs, and gentlemen, that's gonna be some welding, um, and replacing, uh, at least one channel iron, and lowering the weight limit to three ton. That doesn't get sun pickup trucks, but it does get the, the bridge open. I do not have the final report to know what every seam that they want me to weld, but I will have that. We can do that, um, in-house, and then have it re-inspected, and I think, um, that is our viable option. The other option that they throwed out was to leave the bridge, uh, closed to vehicle traffic, put carotid beaters at either end, and make a foot bridge and let golf carts cross it, because it would, uh, possibly help the traffic between the campgrounds and the store, because there is a lot of traffic that way. We would have to spend, uh, a lot of money, probably, uh, well over six figures in preparing that bridge for foot traffic. Wouldn't we could, I, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. So I would ask that we be, take option one, lower the weight limit to three ton. And then allow me to place cameras on that bridge at exit. And I'm not talking about the little cameras that, that you know, we sit on a trail. Place some decent cameras on that bridge, because gentlemen, we, we all know, we've talked about it, replacing this bridge with federal aid money. The bridge replacement's over three million dollars. And if we get a federal grant this year, it's five years out before we even think about replacing it. So I would ask to place a camera system on the bridge, uh, within reasonable cost, and signings that says you're being videotaped. Now, when I ask that question, I've got another bridge on the other side of that one that has a ten-ton limit. I would also ask that we be able to place the same signage and system on that bridge, so we can watch it.
I'll make a motion.
And I'm gonna let you make that motion. I just wanna add one thing. We, we have a, a business up there, a campground that, that's a very good campground. Indian Hills does, does a lot of business. We have to keep this thing somewhat open, so they can function as a business. Otherwise, they're gonna be out of business.
Well, I, and to interrupt, I, I think it does two things when we reopen this bridge, even through a three-ton weight. You have the campground there, and those folks travel back and forth, you know, for their supplies to another local business just on the other side of that bridge, um, there at the, um, milgrove store. If, and I think at this point, the way they have to go around the highway, I think that's just come to halt. So we opened it up with three ton. I think we, we helped the residents hugely, and, you know, then we, you know, it's going to assist both the businesses there on the road.
Go ahead, Greg.
I'll make the motion to open Tower Road, bring it back, have it reduce load limit to three ton after conducting repairs, and the ten-ton bridge be lowered to three-ton limit.
No, I-
Oh, you wanna leave it?
The bridge, the bridge weighs fine. I just wanna be able to monitor, moderate it with cameras.
And allow, uh, video surveillance of both bridges and signage indicating as such.
Got a motion by Joel. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Greg, and while we're on the subject, I just want to ask a question. Apparently, you've told me that there's video prior from an individual up there on who damaged this bridge originally. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we need to pursue that through prosecution? Let the county attorney handle that, because we're talking about a three-million-dollar bridge that we can't fix. We just downgraded it to three thousand or three ton. Uh, I'm curious, I guess, in asking the Commissioners, do we pursue this? Uh, it's caused a great amount of, uh, problems for the Highway Department and, and the citizens and the business owners in that area.
Well, I think it needs to be pursued. I can tell you that Trooper Randall Van Arsdale, um, is investigating the case. He has stayed in touch with me, um, and he has assisted. He's written some other, uh, tickets to some, uh, log haulers that are crossing, crossed our ten-ton bridge up there. There was, um, a little bit of an issue with the identification of the truck to start with, but I think that has all been worked out, and he was going to get with Prosecutor Ben Kim, uh, in regard to that. But I would think it wouldn't hurt for Dana to be involved.
I concur. I know that we need that, a vote, just as long as that's an agreement between Highway Department and-
Yeah.
We can, we can pursue that, because before anything's done, Greg.
Okay. Just wanna make that clear, that we need to pursue that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, lastly, Commissioners, you know, I've, I talked to you about, uh, the end-of-life automobile process, and use those as barriers to, uh, protect my people. I was able to, uh, find the car more than the Commissioners awarded me to spend, uh, for right around, just a little above thirty- spend, uh, for right around, just a little above thirty four hundred dollars. Uh, what I would ask, um, we had another close call this week. I would ask that I be allowed to purchase this, uh, automobile and then wait in line somewhere behind for the second one to see if something comes up in, uh, county surplus. Uh, I could paint it at the shop. Doug White is quite accomplished, uh, body man, uh, as well as, uh, Wally Burdine, they have, uh, painted some other equipment, uh, for me, um, and done a good job. Uh, the automobile would be painted in three different colors. Uh, it would be the, the orange, the lime green and yellow, uh, with, uh, black hash marks throughout it. We could again do all that at the shop, any of the bodywork, um, and then at the, uh, rear of the car, again, a little application, uh, of some different, uh, products that I see, uh, use another piece of an old sprayer boom that I have that I can spread out and block an entire road or half a road or, or whatever I need to. Um, and, um, the lighting and signage we would put on this, uh, we would all do right there in-house, uh, so I could cut the cost way down. Uh, the industry, especially counties are using this instead of buying, uh, the equipment that you pull behind dump trucks because if those get hit, they have to be recalibrated, uh, that they're several thousands of dollars worth this. I mean, if somebody hits one of our own vehicles, well, if it's junk, it's junk.
We talked about this and agreed to this. The thing of it is, I think we only approved two thousand dollars is the problem.
Well, let me.
In a previous meeting.
Uh, is this a vehicle that'll transport workers to and from the job as well?
It is. It, 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 it can. Um, the, the thing that I'm finding commissioners, um, and it may be those that disagree with me here and, and that so speak up, but, um, in today's world, it's pretty hard to find something for two thousand dollars that I'm not gonna put another two, three thousand dollars in.
Uh, I'm not disagreeing with the situation. It's just I know we approved two thousand dollars and we can't without changing that previous decision, uh, moving forward.
Well, I, I, I believe that, uh, I believe we should, if indeed need to, uh, raise that up to meet that, I believe we should. It's for the safety of the people. Um, we'll give it a try. I'm for it. If you two guys would go along with it.
I think we need to do something. I, I, I agree. Uh, so we're gonna plate this and insure it as a county vehicle.
It would have to be plated and insured and the county vehicle would be drove to and from.
That's what I'm getting at.
It would be used on.
The.
Every, you know, it would, could be used on every, uh, location that we're working, uh, but it'd be used for where we're using, uh, flaggers, have road totally closed.
Well, one thing about it, Bob, that gal on Freeman Road would've hit that van instead of running through all those barricades. So, I mean, imagine if somebody had been standing there.
Cable.
Yeah, or a cable, so.
Joel, if you want to make a motion, just make sure we include the amount so it can be changed for the auditor's purpose.
Yeah, I, I would. I would make a motion to allow, uh, highway department to pursue this option at, uh, no greater than thirty five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Does that pacify our money? Okay. Just want to make sure.
Anything, Chad?
I got one last question. We don't plan on leaving this vehicle out overnight in a road closed area, or do we? Or would that happen?
It could possibly happen. I would say no. It would be more of a situation where flaggers are at.
To protect our employees, for sure.
It's, it's, it's the barrier between our employees, uh, where they're working.
An expendable barrier.
It is.
I- if we light this thing, can we light it from the inside so it's not, people aren't, i- if we would have to leave it out, they're not knocking stuff off of it? They'd have to break the windows out of it to, is that making any sense?
We, we can figure something out like that.
I mean, normally I'd say just throw something on top of it, but if you're gonna leave it out.
It would not be, you know, I hate to say I wouldn't leave it out. It was not even close to the plans. Um, you know, kind of the situation, Monroe County uses minivans. Uh, those go in every night. The, the flaggers, they haul the people in and they, they go back and forth and I'm, I'm just using that as, as an example.
Right.
They're, they're never expected to, to stay out, but I mean, from time to time, things stay out, so I'd hate to say, no, it will never stay out.
We got that on the record, that's all that matters.
Sure as shooting, uh, first week, it'd be having to sit out somewhere and then you.
Yeah, we get a road opened up and can't get it closed and we want to make sure nobody drives off in it.
But no, it's more of a protection for people.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Dana.
The, uh, new parent lead policy, um, it went out to elected officials and department heads. I, uh, received one response and, um, so I'm gonna look at it and, and see about, uh, see if there's any changes that are necessary and then so I'll have it for you at the next meeting.
Terrific.
Good. Thank you. Elected officials and department heads. Jack.
Regarding the, uh, June twenty fifth storm, as we entered into the recovery portion of that, my co-ed, which I think is the best co-ed in the state of Indiana, kicked in and they followed up on anybody that reported to two one one or the local five oh two six number. Ended up with thirty eight cases. Some of them were just people merely wanting to report and some of them, and it rings out with that, two people that they're dwelling no longer exist. Uh, we're helping the people that we can, the best we can with, uh, donated funds through the community foundation. There's, uh, some, uh, volunteer organizations that are helping remove some trees in people's yards and there's just some people we're not gonna be able to help. The juice is just not worth the squeeze. We just, well, you know, very expensive project to remove a tree off an RV that we're, we're not gonna end up with anything when we get done. So there's, you know, there's those, so not everybody's gonna get, get right, but we're doing the best we can with volunteer funds and, or donated funds and, and volunteer groups, but, uh, we're down to about eight to ten real cases that we're still working. So, uh, my hand goes off.
We've got everybody in shelter, I'm sure by now, everybody, the people that are homeless or.
There is one family still with, uh, family members and we're, we're, that's our number one property. We're, we're working, uh, my co-ed folks, caseworkers are working with that group to try to get them in some way. So, do the best we can.
Thanks, Jack.
Anyone else? Chris?
Just we got our, we got our ambulances home.
New ambulance is in town?
Yep. Uh, radio was being installed today and, um, power load system was being installed a week from Friday. So, and do you remember, was that how it was implemented?
I think it was. We'd have to go back, but I'm pretty sure it was. Yes.
But it's here.
Good. Get it on the road and watch the deer and all that good stuff, right?
Tree limbs and.
Yeah, yeah. Speaking of what, a little bit about what Jack said there. We've had a lot of trees fall down a- and the guys have been working feverishly. A- and I understand yesterday we had an individual that a tree fell off his property and crushed his fence. His cows got out and landed across the road and we get out there to cut it up and he wants to know for what, when we're gonna pay him. Pay him for what? It's his tree. That's the kind of stuff that the highway department deals with on a day-to-day basis. I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, we're cleaning the trees out of the middle of the road because that's what we're supposed to do. But if that tree's on your property and damages your property and has other issues, that's on you. So I, I just wanted to touch on that real quick. Anyone else? Public comment? Yes, sir?
Well, I apologize. I didn't mean to disrespect you, so I hope you understand that.
I accept that, Sam.
Okay, I was, I was responding to Joe's comment. I'm not gonna sit there and be the dead horse. You know, I'm not a commissioner yet. I don't have no authority to say or do anything. I'll just continue to take my notes and do what I need to do and make my, uh, things known when coming in January. Uh, I am a taxpayer. I like things to be transparent and open so we all understand what's going on.
Yep.
And I think everybody here does too, so.
Absolutely.
I'm in the district, but to you, Bob, uh, I've known you for, you know, how many years, doesn't make any difference, but, you know, I'm pretty outspoken about things and I'm concerned about things. I'm concerned about the way things are going and, uh, that's my intention. Uh, I'm sure by January, uh, we'll, we'll address it differently.
Yep. It'll teach you one thing up here, Sam. Thank you for opening your mouth.
Well, I was, I was answering Joe's comment and I wasn't answering your thoughts because I know he wasn't at the one meeting. Joe questioned, uh, Gary, Doug, Randy, he didn't know about the ones that already see, uh, he, he brought that up and that's the reason I made the point, that I didn't think it was addressed in the public and it wasn't. Regardless of that, my next question, biggest, who's the liaison for the nine oh one?
Me.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Would you care to just have a discussion after this?
Uh, if you want to make some work on there.
Well, just if there was something you wanted to address, that's, that's what.
I think we probably need to have chat.
Madam Auditor.
Um, we're still in the process of a workman's comp audit. Greg provided me with the list of what his employees were and they're not happy with that, so can I work with you two and Greg again? Um, it's their classifications and you just said in the meeting, you had operators and laborers and they need to know exactly who's doing what jobs. So, um, hopefully we can, I, I center an updated list. Hopefully we can get it, but I might be asking more questions to satisfy them.
Whatever I, uh, put in detail or do you need?
This is the first time that it's been this technical and.
It's a new company.
And so, again, they just, they can't, they won't let us just classify it as how they are in the system. They want to know exactly what they're doing to traffic control, flagging or, or laying asphalt. I mean, they're being that technical.
I, would, would they accept their job descriptions because these persons have a job description? This is exactly what they do?
They're, they say they're too generic.
Or?
They say they're too generic.
That's a bit strange, but.
Or job dis- the actual job descriptions are super vague as well?
I know. I'm just, I'm just saying that they're still, as of yesterday, made another phone call and asking the questions.
I guess by that what it is that they want, we can go from there. I mean, obviously the highway department's got the highest rate, uh, as workman's comp because of the dangers of the job.
We'll get there and we've made progress. It's not, uh, decisions, but it's still being worked on.
That's it? Uh, Attorney.
Um, there was a, uh, uh, estimate that came in from Blue Moose in order to, um, take, uh, do some asbestos abatement at the armory and so that, uh, the leak can be fixed. Um, and, uh, you have it before you, uh, it's around twenty five hundred dollars.
Stephen brought this, I think he sent it to everybody here. You got a copy of it?
It's two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to, uh, bay asbestos, uh, on pipe installation on the hot water line in the basement of the armory. Uh, the pipe run is sixty feet long, two inches wide and eight to nine feet from the ground. Uh, the personnel that is handling this is properly licensed, um, and the contract consulting agreement, uh, I looked it over and it seems, uh, appropriate. Uh, so again, that, that amount is two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and my understanding is that they may be able to be there tomorrow.
There's a small leak, I guess, in an elbow. According to the maintenance guy, it's been leaking for a little while. Of course, everything down there's covered in asbestos, uh, so it needs to be fixed. So if there's any, uh, questions, I think it's, Joel and I's already spoke about it. Everybody want to make a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Requires one signature.
Blue Moose Environmental will remove asbestos, conduct asbestos abatement in the armory.
Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Commissioners, comments?
All the generators that are, are, have been repaired. Uh, they were considered storm damaged. Well, they were storm damage related. Uh, uh, Tower, Rocky Tower Hills up and running. That's Superintendent Melton's radio and the Health Department or, uh, EMA Veterans Building now has generators up and functioning, so we're back up normal in that regard.
Thank you, Joel.
Was that a new install on Rocky Order?
That is. That unit was not five years old, but because of the damage, it won't be warrantable. Uh, but it is a new install. It's life for life, brand new unit. It's already under warranty and been commissioned.
And I think you said that that goes off every Monday at nine o'clock. Is that correct?
I shared that with.
Jack.
EMA Director, Jack White.
Mm. We appreciate you staying on top of that. As we know how important those are when we need them. I don't have anything else, uh, that I can think of at this time.
Can I have one more thing?
Sure.
There is almost three, four weeks in between claims, so your next round will be increased. And there will be some of them that are more than four weeks old because what they're turning in now is already maybe a week or so old, so can I get a blanket to anything that is gonna be past your commissioners' date to go ahead and repay them outside?
Out of cycle. Yeah, we, our vendors need taken care of. Absolutely.
You make the motion, Gary, or if we need it?
We can take a vote on it if you want. Uh, got a motion by Joel, uh, since you nodded your head to, uh, pay any, uh, late bills out of cycle. I'm gonna put it that way because they would be late otherwise. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
And, and it does get very healthy in that period. Happens a couple times a year. Yeah. All right, everyone have a great day. Thank you.